So. Sorry. It's okay. Okay, there we go. You may begin.
Thanks. I'm Heather Brandt. I'm a resident. I just wanted to bring to your attention, and this all sort of happened over the lot, really a lot today, but over the last couple of weeks. I have an elderly parent who lives here in Longmont. And I started the process of figuring out, you know, what does the big picture look like as we go down the line with aging in place or having to be in a, in a independent living, not in anything with assisted. But I started off digging around a website and I really am here just to, as a offer of, well, a little bit of frustration, but also I couldn't navigate any site to find out any information about affordable senior housing in City of Longmont. Nothing. I find, of course, I called the Senior Center, make an appointment with a counselor at the Senior Center just to find out information for my dad. It was a one-month wait for a phone meeting. One month. There's three counselors there. That's would be a lucky guess for a senior in our city if they went, if they attended the Senior Center. The only reason I needed to call the Senior Center is because my dad goes there and plays pool and, and I'm familiar with the Senior Center. My parents volunteered there for years. I have called the Longmont Housing Authority and left messages over the past month, never to be called back. I called Molly today. I know you're sick. I did leave you a message today. Never heard back, which I understand, and I didn't expect a turnaround. But there is something broken in the system for seniors to be able to access where they find out about all of these facilities that we have throughout the city that we funded. We funded the Lodge, Heartstone, you know, all of them, or, you know, all the ones that we have funded as a city, but there's no way for seniors to find the information where to go. You go on the city, the Housing Authority website, this is the website, announcements, you can't even get a full screen. This is cut off. This announcement right here says that the waiting list for senior housing opened up. The counselors at the Senior Center have no idea when they open up because they say that the Housing Authority doesn't tell them when it opens up. You have AMI written all over the place. What, no explanation of what AMI is. How is a senior supposed to know what AMI is? There is no place that says where you qualify or don't qualify for housing. You also go to the city website to find out when the city camp or when the Housing Authority meeting is. And when you go to where, when the Housing Authority meeting is on the city website, it says six o'clock. You open up the agenda, it says eight o'clock, but then there's a seven o'clock council meeting. It's just a very, very convoluted system that any, my dad could never, he cannot pay his Longmont dairy milk bill without guidance on a website. This is a broken system. It's not serving the seniors. I know my time's up. But I wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. And I know it's a little loosey-goosey, but this was my experience today.
Thank you.
Fair? Okay.
I'll give you a call back tomorrow.
That's fine. Thank you so much for my, for listening to my, uh.
Get the phone number.
My late night. Right.
Is that the phone number that you were calling? When you called the Housing Authority?
Oh, I called the main number. I called Quincy. I called, I mean, the list goes on with people I left messages for, never, never get called back. Senior, Senior Center should be in touch with housing. Bye. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any other comment here in the public? We have no comments.
I'm sorry.
No comments.
No comments? Okay.
So now we are moving on to old and new business. So looking at the remote participation on the fifteenth of April for Commissioner Popkin. So we need to make two motions, it looks like. So a motion to suspend by reference council rule of procedure twenty-five point two, point eight, twenty-two, to allow Commissioner Popkin to participate remotely on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
And I second.
Okay.
For myself. I'd just like to get out of town in Texas.
Okay. I see who you are. Okay. So any discussion on the matter? Okay, let's vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that passes five to zero.
Thank you.
With Chair Peck and Commissioner Yarborough out. And then the second motion is to allow for electronic participation by Commissioner Popkin on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five due to business manager that enables him to attend in person.
So moved.
Second, is this the same thing?
No, one is to allow you to, well.
One allows you to be absent, the other allows you to.
It allows you to suspend, yes. And our rules of procedure and then, yeah. So we're suspending our rules and now we're allowing you to participate.
Excellent.
Okay. So all, all those in favor?
I move.
Aye.
I thought she already did.
But did you move second?
Yes.
Loved it on the second.
Commissioner, sorry. Yeah. So Commissioner Crist moved the item and, yes, well, we'll move council member every second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And opposed? So that passes five to zero with Commissioner Yarborough and Chair Peck out. Now we're moving on to resolution, Ida V, Resolution LHA twenty twenty-five dash oh four, approve each CD of administrative plan with presentation. On me, I'm Tracy.
This is a yearly thing that we go through. It's our voucher admin plan and it goes over the federal regulations that we need to follow quite a lot. So goes through, sorry, my laptop thing is running out of batteries. It also goes through the policies that the Housing Authority can make. There are certain places where we can, we can set, set a policy. And so this year, basically the only changes that are happening is because of HAPNA. And that housing opportunity through modernization act, that was supposed to go into effect last year and they pulled it. And that was due to a new system, computer system that they need to get up, you think we can transfer over to the HAPNA new rules. And that system isn't up yet. So until then, we're under the old regulations. So this is written with the old regulations and then with, with the new regulations. So you have a part like a six A or six B. One would be when HAPNA goes into effect, it's project effect in October, so it goes into effect and that would be our new policy. So most of the changes that are in the new policy is, like I said, it's all, it's all around HAPNA. None of our policies that we have in our twenty twenty-four admin plan are changing. Policies that we have, you know, we have, we can, we can choose. One of the policies is you can choose to put preferences on equal virtue service. One of our preferences is that they live and work in, live or work in Longmont. So if there was, you know, if we had other preferences, we could, we could sure put those on, other offices to do that. But those have been changed, those are still the same as last year. So in your packet, there is a summary of the changes for each chapter. Some changes to is the federal regulation notice that we refer to in some of them. Human trafficking has been placed on the bottom line, the victims. Billings against women, notification that we give out. So those are, those are the highlights. If you want me to go through each chapter, I can do that. Or if you have any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? Of course. Mr. Popkin.
I'm honored. Thank you, Chair. I just have one question. For chapter seventeen, the packet says it went through an extensive rewrite. And so I was just curious if you elaborate on like why such a, like, the rest of the chapters generally seem like there were some clarifications or different sections added, like what prompted the extensive rewrite for that chapter in particular?
So under our, they did a lot of changes under the, for project-based vouchers. A lot of it was, so if we're going to do a pyramid for project-based voucher projects, how we go out to procure or notify properties that we're going to, you know, rent vouchers to place on properties, that has changed. The number and how we calculate how many vouchers we can, or project-based vouchers we can have has changed. How we, how we notice, how we put notice in paper, how we determine who gets the vouchers for the project-based voucher. All of that has changed. And so that, that was just basically rewritten. And, you know, it's all covered here. It's, it's not enough, but we have the ability to make policy.
It's just realignment with additional regulations or change regulations.
Right.
Thank you.
Well, you'll hear me talk about this later. And it can change again. And it's kind of what we're seeing right now in terms of how they're approaching certain situations. You know, we're getting information that if certain emails contain certain items in the signature lines, HAB won't respond to. So I think it is something over the next year that we're going to be in tune to. So just get ready. It may later in the year, I mean, many of these rules could, could change us.
As a city, are we scrubbing those lines?
I am having that conversation right now because basically pronouns is what we're hearing. And, you know, as we look at it, we have to ensure that we're representing our community and maximizing our ability to get revenue and can't put our residents at risk. And so we're learning about that right now, but you heard us talk, language matters. And we're gonna have to be really in tune to that as we're interacting with different agencies.
Have some choice language about. Let's go on.
Yeah, that's what we're.
So I say that because we're just constant and you'll, and I'll talk about this later based on, we raised the flag. I'm gonna lower the flag. But there's still a potential we could raise the flag on the last line.
That's what the mayor of Washington was DC doing.
What was that?
That's what the mayor of Washington DC was doing. As she was doing several things, including painting out the Black Lives Matter process.
Yep.
And they're different because their entire budget depends on.
Yes.
Exactly.
Do we have any other questions?
I have a curiosity. This is mostly for Tracy. Tracy, you said we can, we're allowed a preference for if you live and work in Longmont, but you, we could have other preferences and I lack the imagination. What other preferences would we have?
Oh, you can have a list as a, as a preference?
Oh, yes.
Homes.
In terms of.
Elderly disabled. You know, the preferences that don't go against fair housing, so you can.
Yeah.
Yeah. So those are, those are the ones that I can think of right now. Just like this elderly disabled. We, let me tell you the history behind the working and living long. We found that when we'd open up our rating list for the voucher program, we'd get a lot of people come out of state applying. And then since we have portability in the NASA voucher program, a lot of people will come in from out of state to get it and then they report it back to Longmont, the state that they were coming from. Once they found out that we have a threat, we have a requirement, if they stay here four years before they're allowed to port, then, then they, they wouldn't want to come. But that would mess up all the rules. We have to notify them and go through all of that process. So that's why we said working in Longmont, for board of, in Longmont, we give preferences. We also, since the, we don't have very many family housing apartments, we will, we'll send them from, but right now we don't have AMN, Aspen Meadows neighborhood. So one of the things that voucher does is it kind of serves that fam, the families. And we've got a lot of disabled and elderly women that's on our program, but it was basically kind of safe for the family ability in the community.
So I think this has been the night where preference has come up in multiple fashions. It's kind of interesting. I think what you might hear across the three examples of preference we've talked about tonight is that preference adds a layer of complexity that in true north, we, we absolutely, the council supported digging in on that because we expected a number of applicants and this was an extraordinary opportunity when it comes to vouchers. There's a lot of fair housing and administrative technicality issues that play into it. So that's why when you heard earlier on the DPA program, that's something we did not add that layer in the past. It really just adds a lot of wrinkles and it's, council's prerogative to ask staff to look into those things, but it just, there's a lot of light pieces for that.
So just a quick, do you have the live work preference?
Yes.
Currently part of that?
For balance.
Just for balance. Okay, just making sure. You'll be in a good thing.
If there's no other questions or comments, I have a motion to move Resolution LHA twenty twenty-five dash four.
So moved. Second.
So moved by Commissioner Popkin, seconded by Commissioner McCoy. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Always opposed? So that passes five to zero with Chair Peck and Commissioner Yarborough absent. Now we're on to the update on Aspen Meadows secret apartments, flooring defect issue.
Okay, we're gonna have to deal on this. So we reported this to the Board of Commissioners last April. We've been working on this for quite some time, but the flooring that was installed at Aspen Meadows in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one started failing soon after we did that large we have project. We have been working with the general contractor, the flooring supplier and the architect since then to figure out solutions that could work for all parties. I am happy to report that we have entered into a settlement agreement to get the flooring replaced. LHA will not bear any cost in getting the flooring replaced or any fixed, it's a combination of a fix and a replacement. We are going to buy boxes, throw financial input into it. So we're very happy to report that that issue is getting resolved right now. They started work yesterday and it will be work happening throughout the building for the next couple of months, at least three months, because they're doing common areas first and then one or two units a day. So here by summer, like hopefully enough, that sounds too far. It's more like a late spring, we will have the flooring at Aspen Meadows replaced in certain areas and lifted up and applied in a proper fashion in other areas. We were able to do this and avoid a loss of or insurance base, so.
Thank you.
Molly, are, are people gonna have to move out of their apartments?
Nope. They'll have to be out of the unit just for the day, but they will not have to spend the night out. So we've got the common area set up with places where people can hang out or share the senior services event schedule if they want to go do something.
But they just have to keep busy for the day.
And they don't have to move their, their stuff.
Nope. The contractors are gonna move things around.
And then now the federal budget forecast?
So I'll take this. Who has a copy of this? If you don't have a copy. So, a thanks to Commissioner McCoy and Commissioner Yarborough when they were at National Cities talking to the reps about challenges that were coming forward. I, I think, and I'm talking to all city staff, all LHA staff when I say this and you heard me say it a while ago, we just don't know what's gonna happen. And so if you remember a few weeks ago, staff had a conversation with HUD representatives about what was potentially gonna happen in terms of vouchers, voucher funding, specifically the shortfall category. So we start raising the flag in terms of what's coming forward. And then, and so this document was presented yesterday from the National Low Income Housing Coalition. And so I think part of what I'm saying, what I'm gonna say is, A, we're gonna hear and we're going to inform, but reacting, we're gonna be really tactical when we do this and we can't overreact till we get this information. So when you look at this document, it's a, it's a mixed bag. So in the continuing resolution that they put forward, so if you look at the HUD's tenant-based rental assistance, the TBRA program, they actually, what was put in the continuing resolution is a three point six five billion increase from the previous fiscal year. When you look at HUD's project-based rental assistance program, there was an eight hundred and eighty million dollar increase from point four. There was an eighteen point four million increase for section two oh two. And then there was a forty eight point seven billion increase from the previous year on section eight eleven. Then you can see, when you start getting into this document of the HUD's Community Development Funds, I think it's CDBG, there's a three point two nine billion dollar cut. So many of these things are actually what we were worried about, improvements, but there's also areas where it's going to hurt in different areas. But in terms of the Housing Authority, when you look at this specifically, I was, if you go to page. There is it, Molly, we were going over this earlier. Tenant-based rental assistance, which is three point six billion higher, so that's kind of what we were looking at. It's interesting when Kinder and I, we were looking at the numbers in this category, we actually could see where we were getting more money. If you remember when we were looking at January and February, but I think they've built some things in where they're increasing it for the shortfall this year. So we have more to dig into this. But that being said, when we look at this, we're gonna have to end this, but we know that they increased a lot of areas that could connect to what we're, what we're doing as a housing authority.
So overall, that's a one point three billion dollar net increase of those five programs of these even factor in the CDBG. Is that the treaty developed in front of CDBG or is that just the congressional directed spending?
Well, that's, so in CDBG, I think that's just a congressional, congressional directed spending because they actually kept it flat. So it didn't get an increase that actually, if you look at.
Are we counting on any congressional directed spending?
Not, not this year.
So net-net, we're not.
It's a formula, it's a formula based too, so.
Right.
You know, we could potentially lose some in the formula based on population as the cities are growing. So not bad.
That would be relatively marginal and so forth.
Right. You know, not bad as we're looking at twenty-five.
And are these other formulas, are these, is like the TBRA, is the RHO and some of the others, are those formula based?
I, I don't know.
Like, are we expecting an increase from that inherently or are those competitive grant programs or what's going on there?
So what we've kind of been told is that.
And I know this happened very quickly.
Well, no. So they, they kind of sent us a deadline and they said by January twenty-fifth, make sure you have all of your twenty twenty-four vouchers recorded. Because I think what they do is they take the very last end of month, December calculation to help provide the number to go for budget of what everybody needs for this year, which is why I think we're getting the increase right now. But we probably won't see a renewal until like May, so we're kind of still like on that teeter tottering. And we do, we do know last year wasn't just us, that was in shortfall. So, you know, there were people that were in millions of dollars of shortfall. And so it's, it's kind of like we're just kind of playing a waiting game right now until they actually send us our renewal, which will then let us know, did they grant us more funds? If so, are we still gonna be in shortfall this year? Because we are in more shortfall than last.
Yeah, and I think the difference in this is we didn't know what Congress was going to appropriate and we don't know how Congress appropriated more. So I think to Kinder's point, it's probably the numbers we were putting in to create the additional appropriations in this category. So we have a project, we have one two oh two project.
Two two oh two.
Two, two two oh two is one location, Heartstone and Lodge. So that may actually help us in the budget additionally because they had money there too. Now, that's for this year.
What, Carol, so what falls under the HUD's Community Development Fund as far as what their. Our block grant?
That's what I would think would be the.
CDBG.
CDBG.
So it's, good news for this year. It doesn't mean that we're on the woods because if you read through the issues, they, they even point out that twenty twenty-six budget's going to be a significant, who knows what's gonna happen in that process? So as we were looking at this in terms of the vouchers and how we were going to approach it, we basically tiered it down to if worst case situation happened, what will you do? So the first thing that HUD recommended doing is filling out a waiver. So under HUD rules right now, if you're gonna lower somebody's rent or adjust it, you have to give them two years' notice.
It all depends on when their recert happens, when, yeah. So it could be, be anywhere from one to two years depending on their recertification.
The waiver doesn't have us do that. We can do it much more quickly. So I instructed staff to go ahead and process the waiver, but that doesn't mean we're gonna act on it. It just means that it's processed in case we need it should worst case situation happen. The second piece of that is we are not revouchering. Right now, revouchering means if somebody leaves and we have a voucher open, we're not getting someone in that voucher right now. And again, that's prepping for a cut or something happening. We were working on it, it's gonna happen now.
So you're saying we don't have to remove people later?
We don't have to remove.
We just keep it open for now.
We just keep it open.
I think what Commissioner Yarborough heard when she, because we split up, when she spoke with the Goose's office, that they didn't think twenty twenty-six would be as, as favorable as this. And every time we talked to somebody, in fact, there was only one other issue. I brought this up at every meeting and including the one with Crowe that, because he's not even our rep and I tried to get him on this as well. And it was interesting that they were very receptive to it, but they just, they just didn't have any real solid answers because as you can see here, we got all these. but they just, they just didn't have any real solid answers because as you can see here, we got all these openings open. But I did speak with the White House Inter-Governmental Affairs, the Western States, Michael there, and he's the director of it, so it was interesting. I brought it up to the deputy director as well. That this is important. Hopefully they'll figure that out.
Yeah. I, you know, my gut tells me this isn't a red or blue issue. This is a, you know, every state's facing this. So I think it's, it's one that is harder pressed to deal with.
That's how I sold it.
Yeah, and I think if you look at what happened in the previous round, this was the point where the internal fighting started occurring because, you know, when you look at just the number of vouchers and you look at populations, Florida and Texas has a lot of vouchers and so, and population-based, so I think that's gonna be in place. All that being said though, so when we go through this, so we're not revouchering now, and you go, well, what's next if there's cuts in there deeper? The next thing that we talked about doing is thus far, we've been pretty generous in that HUD rules require you that it's basically two people per bedroom. If we got pushed, the next least impactful thing to do is to go back to the two people per bedroom. So right now-
And we currently have one?
Well, no, right now, if it's you and a teenage child, we're authorizing two bedrooms. We would then shift it to where if it's you and a teenage child, we would go with one bedroom. Because if you have housing, you're just not getting individual bedrooms. That's the next least impactful approach. The next step down would be then we would evaluate reductions based on the waiver across the board to make sure that you're still paying something for an individual's housing, which means they're gonna have to make the difference on the voucher side. And then the last step is we will start removing people from the vouchers if cuts are made. So if '26 becomes a thing, I just wanted you all to know, as we were heading into the, what do we do in '25? We've tiered it out from least impactful to most impactful and just know that in those situations, we'll be communicating with you going, here's the number, here's what we're gonna have to do to manage that based on what could potentially happen in the budget process.
I'll have one note then, mixed up in all of this. We assigned our project-based vouchers out to Village on Main to make that development happen and then to Ascent to make that development happen. And then also a future project, that at the comments, if it is successfully getting tax credits. We satisfied our Village on Main commitment here in December. We're slated to fulfill on Ascent by January 26. This is all like, not great timing for any of that frankly, but one thing we have to do is through the rest of '25, those vouchers that we're not refilling, we have to be ready to assign those to Ascent in January as well. So that's also just an added layer that we're trying to manage and balance optimistically.
So it's a mixed good news, bad news. The good news is it didn't hit us now. The bad news is we're hearing '26 is gonna be a battle. But I think we have a fairly solid plan and, you know, when we talked about this, there was, there was a point where it was like, well, we need to do something, then it was like, hmm, maybe not. And I just think that's how we're gonna have to approach it right now. And, you know, it's moving daily on us and I think managing how we react when we react is going to be incredibly important because you also don't want to overreact.
If you have vacancies due to the lack of vouchers, would you consider lifting that up to market rate? Or just below market rate?
So it's two different issues. So the vacancies, and if you're talking about a vacancy where there's not a voucher, you still have your tax credit requirements in terms of what incomes people need to have to live in those units. If it's a project-based voucher, I don't think we have a hard time filling those. And a project-based voucher is on the property, so it's two different questions.
Just thinking back to our notes from last time, didn't we talk about having a little higher rate?
Talked about mixed development where there's a possibility there'd be market rate.
Yeah, so we talked about potentially a project of a mixed income project that would include some type of li-tech, some type of de-restricted containment home, some type of non-de-restricted units. That's different, but on these tax credit projects, you not only have your HUD requirements and your project-based voucher requirements, then you have your tax credit credit requirements. And in that, you can let somebody come in lower if you have a vacancy. And we've talked about that if we have vacancies that's-
Lower than market rate?
Lower than whatever the AMI is required on the unit. So if you have a 60% AMI unit that's been vacant for three months, evaluate whether or not it makes more sense to bring someone out of 50% AMI. But you've gotta be careful with that because that's what they did at Village on Main. But they were bringing 30% AMIs into 60% AMI units and the gap was too large and it created a financial challenge.
We're already having trouble with some of the other AMIs in vacancies.
So we were gonna tell you more because we were really heading down, oh, here it comes. And then we start seeing CR and seeing this. And so I think this is something we're just gonna keep communicating to you all as we're seeing new information, but it could have been much worse.
Two questions here. One, in terms of communicating what could be worse. Is there a proactive communication strategy we should be thinking about to residents or to kind of people on vouchers, like to just let them know that this could happen versus just kind of catch them off guard if it happens? I don't wanna like create fear or frustration unduly, but I also don't want people to be caught off guard. If that, like even if we're just saying this, that these are the options we're considering right now and we just need to be transparent. Like, I don't think we've probably faced this, I mean, I know I'm two months in here, but like I assume we haven't faced this in the past decade or so.
I don't think we've probably seen this since the eighties in terms of what we're dealing with. But here's what we have to be careful with. Many of the people that are on vouchers, not all, but many of the people may have mental health issues and other issues. So we're gonna have to manage how we communicate with folks. And I'm just telling you this, when we go to someone and we tell them, we're gonna terminate your voucher because of not getting the right paperwork and things like that, it spins people and we spend a lot of time. And so what I could say is we'll think about it, but we're gonna, again, language is gonna be really important in terms of how we communicate it. And it just may be, there's a lot of uncertainty right now. And we'll be communicating with you as we know more, but understand things are changing daily, it's gonna happen today, right? I don't know, we need to figure that out. I would actually work with like Lindsay or someone who's a communication specialist.
Again, we're still thinking, we're thinking about if we wanna say something, even if it's just the tune of like, hey, there's a lot of uncertainty, we're monitoring it right now, no impacts to you currently.
Right.
And we'll keep posted as soon as we have more information if there's going to be any kind of change. I don't know if that's like the statement that would be how it would be received, I'll defer to the professionals in this space here, but-
I mean, I think if someone is living like at their fight or flight mode.
No, that's it.
And that you have people in these vouchers who are, you know, you don't even know like what your end of day is gonna look like. I worry that that might push somebody over.
That's, that's kind of it. And, you know, part of it, it depends on the property, but I think in all properties, we've had this issue. Like I've literally had to go into meetings with different properties because the rumor mill is so bad and say, unless you hear it from me, or in this case, Lauren or Quincy or Molly, do not believe anything that's coming out, because we're always finding the rumor mill. And so-
You know, it might be helpful to get a few little talking points, either through executive session or some other source, just to make sure that we're on the same page.
On the same page, yeah.
You know, it's a good point and I would, honestly, I would defer to our communication discussions with Lindsay and that group.
I think that's a good suggestion there. And like, cause even if we're not communicating anything, there's social media, there's news, there's unnews, there's other sources of information.
Yeah.
Like people are gonna hear rumors of something, and so can we be clear where we know something or what impacts? Even if we aren't saying time details, we're giving a timeline or anything.
Yeah, could be. At this point, nothing's changed, but there's still uncertainty. And we will communicate to you as quickly as something hits a certain key. But yeah, let us work with our communication professionals because that's why we hired them.
Getting a little bit of one half-page or two, I think.
And are there opportunities to look at other, the Section 202 or the 811, especially looking at people with disabilities? So is people who are maybe, if they're using their voucher, can we have these other options?
Not, not this, so 202 projects are probably.
Well, and they're, they're, you can't create any 202s. They, they don't, they don't, the programs died. This is only supporting those programs that are still out there.
Okay, Section 811 vouchers are specific vouchers that you have to apply for and be awarded. We don't currently have any of those.
Okay.
So not us.
So, so we may have to look at that.
Those vouchers are very specific based on the services required.
Okay.
And they come with services, so people exiting homelessness or people with intellectual disabilities.
I do need-
So we don't have any dedicated funding or projects for that outside of our permits coordination?
Done.
Okay, thank you.
On that note for homelessness, that is where one of the biggest cuts is happening.
Continue of care.
One of the biggest cuts is in homelessness on continued care.
I guess the regional.
And so what we're also hearing to the point of this is the use of Housing First is going away.
The term.
The term Housing First is going away. And again, we're seeing it at HUD, we're seeing other jurisdictions moving away from it. There's a lot of nuance to that, but again, it's one of those pieces where language matters.
You referred to housing with supports, which is functionally the same thing, just messaging stuff?
My other question that I had is, I'm looking at generally level programs in some of these areas, which is surprising. Generally level funded programs. I'm just wondering like, is it worth, I don't know how many should we have, for instance, for like Healthy Homes or for a few of these other, but like, is it worth a little bit of a burst this year while before the next budget cycle to try to capture that if we have them recently? I don't know where, where we are in that, just like putting out the idea of like, if these were to go away next year, would we wanna try to capture one last cycle of that before something, even if we thought it was originally two, three years down the road or something?
Usually we'll get an email, probably around April or May timeframe, that tells us what voucher funding you can apply for. So some of these may not, you may not be able to apply for some of these vouchers. It's just continued funding, but they'll let us know, hey, there's money available, you can apply for them. And then that gives us the kickstart to do it. So it will all depend on that email when we get it.
Yeah, so like Healthy Homes has that hazard control. If we did, we'd wanna treat it as one time. Essentially to, you know, for like, you know, rehab programs and things like that.
I understand if we, if we have a need at some point in the next five years, would we wanna try to capture now and bump that up a little? Same with, I don't know if we tap into Choice Neighborhoods or any of these other kind of more housing infrastructure-related investments.
I will say that some of the degree programs that aren't these congressionally incorporated programs, I would say some of those are higher risk right now. Where HUD isn't necessarily following through once the grades that they've awarded. Specifically the grade initiative retrofit program that we did not go for, but you have neighbors in the region that have that are left hanging a little bit right now. But that's not necessarily across the board.
Thank you for the update.
Yeah.
So now on to the interim executive director report.
I'm keeping it pretty brief.
Okay, yes.
Speaking of 202 programs, right now we are, I've dropped Eddie. We have an RFP drafted to obtain financial consulting services to help us through that process. We have gotten some really good feedback from doing some outreach with those that have done 202Xs before. Some of them say that now is actually the time to try and do it because the program, who knows what's gonna happen in the future, but right now it's out there. Also, we're working on putting together pre-development budget. So in the next month or two, we're gonna be sorting out what the plan is for that to make sure we have the resources to keep moving and how we're gonna sort it out. So we're making strides there. Otherwise, I think I'll just pause there for the night.
And in a sense, just continuing to go forward if you have it right, you know, vertical now, so.
Updates on operations?
So I noticed an error in the dates on the vacancy report. It, for some reason, reset and pulled through February from the last time we pulled the report. So that's not actually the actual vacancy numbers. It's closer to 90... 96,000. Kendra and I are gonna be working, like we discussed last month, on a better vacancy report. I don't like the way it pulls the information, especially for units that are long-standing vacant units. The way it calculates based on the dates, so we will be working on that and haven't figured it out just yet. Still working on closing out our vacancies for at Aspen Meadows neighborhood, three tax credit, one PBV. Working on those. Quincy's actually been helping out with a lot of these, calling all the people on the rate list, trying to hustle and get people in. What we're finding is a lot of people are not responding at all. Or they're over, over-income, especially at Aspen Meadows neighborhood. We've got a lot of over-income people, so that they end up not qualifying. For Aspen Meadows Senior, we have four vacancies. We're not actively gonna try to fill those right now because the contractors are gonna use the vacancies to stage while they work in the common areas, just to prevent more hazards in those areas. We can tell them to stay out of the way and not walk over into the areas being worked on, but people have been there, so wanna reduce the hazards.
They're nodding their shoulders.
And so having those units available and then they immediately will turn those units first. It's actually working out nicely because they can sort of trial and error on timing and some of the issues that we might have to solve for in those vacant units, and it's faster. Speaking of the rumor mill, we had two tenant meetings last week. And in the second tenant meeting, by the time I made it downstairs to the first floor, someone had already told me, oh, I heard we're not allowed to leave our units at all when they're working on the hallways.
That's the opposite.
Right, and we were like, no, we, you can leave your unit. We just say, you know, try to not schedule stuff that day if possible and be careful when you leave. So, I mean, just from one floor to the next.
Yeah, that rumor mill just sucks me the floor.
Yeah.
Pun intended. Fall River, six vacancies and Spring Creek as well. Again, a lot of these are, people are moving out as we fill them. So it looks like it's the same units and it's not. You know, there's constant turnover. Heartstone-
That's good, right? Looks like people are like filling the vacancies.
But then two more become vacant.
Yeah, I mean, not like, yeah.
Yeah. Heartstone has three. Those should fill up quickly. I believe one of those is an unfortunate eviction due to passing, which we've talked about in the past. So that just went to our attorney, so that one will continue to be vacant for like another 30 to 45 days. The Lodge is fully occupied. Suites, we have just one vacancy, which is an LHA one, so happy to report. That issue that we had had consistently with getting units filled at the Suites is no longer an issue. Village on Main, we have two vacant and really those vacancies originally were PBVs and we have transferred some residents to those PBVs under the recent accommodation process. So now we just have two tax credit- so now we just have two tax credit vacancies which will fill quickly, because they're thirty percent units. And then Briarwood, we have two vacancies that we're working on as well. And then the Suites, our down unit there, which was MEF, is anticipated to be completed on the twenty-fourth, so we will have that unit back up and running very soon, which is great.
Any questions?
Just so you know, the thing that's, I'm getting a little anxious about is inflation. So, you know, we kind of, you all got to experience the elevator issue. When we couldn't get the motor, and waited for the motor, and we got it. I, it wouldn't shock me to see like, see if they could make its issues and things like that pose different financial issues, simply because of potentially where inflation's headed. So we're going to have to watch the budget really close on a lot of these things, and you know, if we end up having a MEF unit, who knows what that's going to look like in three to six months? Inflation, rumor bears now, and what it's going to cost to clean those units, so that's something that they will do, you know, they're doing a great job, if you notice, they're handling the operation reports now, thinking at a different level, and it's been good for us, and good for me because I can look at different things. But just know that that's something that I'm getting anxious into, certainly.
Okay, property updates.
I'm happy to report that the landscaping at Spring Creek and Fall River is much better than it used to be. The rocks have all been moved. If nothing else, put that on my tombstone. Because it's been like the bane of my existence, so all the rocks have been distributed where they need to be, out of the parking lots. Our maintenance team, in tandem with the landscape contractor that we have, have been doing purification projects. And then they're also doing a lot of wood chips, what is that called?
Mulch.
Mulch, yeah. Mulch, where we need it, where it's worn down or blown away, and so, yes, it's much nicer. We've also seen forestry has been replanting trees that were cut down previously, or whether it was for disease or anything else. All along Hearthstone Lodge, they've replaced those trees. And then also at, around Fall River and Spring Creek, there were trees that needed to be replaced in the spring, so getting some good movement there. Otherwise, the properties are kind of just doing their thing, we're having our, maybe our quarterly coffee and conversations. So far, that's been well received. And then we do the monthly at Sweet Zinnia, just getting the population ready to stay in contact with them.
Everything's been going pretty good, anything?
Nope.
And not, not that like Zinnia, we don't always talk about Zinnia a lot, just because we don't own it, but we property manage. Due to the, what happened with the elevator, we actually purchased a spare motor to put on.
Oh, okay.
When it first, the request first came out, I was like, this is, why would we buy that? And then Village on Main happened, and I said, here's what we experienced at this property, do you want to do this? And we would get reimbursed for the warranty from the contractor, so. And we're always learning.
Yeah.
Always shifting gears.
Thank you. Public health and safety updates?
I have that from Sarah. Sarah wasn't able to make it tonight, so she sent me an update. Village on Main recently had a community meeting with the Assistant Fire Chief and Fire Marshal, Michelle Goldman, and that went well a couple of weeks ago. She was able to clear up a lot of myths about what to do in an emergency, what to expect, where to go, evacuation plans. And then, calls for service, Suites had nine, Aspen Meadows Neighborhood had zero, Aspen Meadows Senior, four, two were welfare checks. One at the Lodge, none at the Hearthstone, Village on Main had three. One was a trespassing unhoused person sleeping in the entrance, and two were non-property related, mostly. There was a person screaming at the bell stop on the city sidewalk. Briarwood, zero, Fall River, zero, and Spring Creek, one. Zinnia had twenty-two, six of which were welfare checks. We have had a lot happening at Zinnia, but we just expect that.
Isn't that because you said it's partially a function of moving everybody in at once, I don't know?
We're still in the early stages of settling, people getting used to living in community, having neighbors. And I think just the reality for a lot of people, there's still some people who struggle to open a bank account, figure out their social security. So the Allroads staff and our staff work really closely together to do what we can. But, you know, it is, it's a difficult situation for some people, and we try our best to manage that and provide all those resources. I think if we didn't have the, what is it called, housing supports model? If we didn't have the supports part, it'd be much harder, so I'm really grateful for the partnership. We have weekly meetings with ownership, voucher team, and the Allroads team for case management. Like at least three a week, so.
And as you move more people in and people transition out, and it becomes more staggered, do you anticipate then that those calls for service won't be reduced as people get settled?
I think so. With every move in and new personalities coming into a community, there's always going to be a blip. And then it will restabilize. I think a lot of our calls for service again, too, which Sarah talked about last month, registered, sex vendors have to register consistently, and those end up as calls for service, so some of those might actually be for our services. Whenever they make contact, they mark that as a call for service, so that might artificially increase our reverence for that property. But just like we saw at the Suites, I think we'll see a decrease. We also got word from Allroads and the voucher management team that we are only pulling from the local case conference any for six months. We're getting a pretty good one on it. Which we suspect will help, because that's exactly what we did at the Suites, and then we made a commitment. I don't know if that would happen with Elements Two Properties, but we're going to kind of see what happens over the next six months with referral process, success of clients. Due to the ties to Longmont, we, that's what we, I don't want to say the word assume, that's what we attribute the success of Suites.
To manage with added services.
Yeah, the services, the connection to Longmont, the fact that the people want to live in Longmont, this is their home.
Yeah.
And they have that local connection, they're more likely to be successful.
Yeah, I think when you pull out of the, that's the lower category list, correct?
The coordinated entry.
The coordinated entry list. They're already being supported before they get housed, so you have our lead team, our core team, you know, you have different agencies that are already engaged with individuals. So to Lauren's point, what we saw at the Suites was, it made a tremendous difference. Doesn't mean it completely goes away, it just made a difference. But to set expectations, it took us about two and a half years to really make progress at the Suites, of the only first engaged to win. We really started seeing consistent, a consistent reduction in cost of service, and even it, it flare up on us. And, and so it's a multi-probable approach. But to the point, I, you know, we've got the Allroads group there. We have on the other side, two clinicians were hired, a third clinician, where they've hired the third clinician. We have Recovery Cafe helping us. It's still not enough in many ways in what we're, we're needing to do. So, you know, permanent supportive housing generally is, I, you know, I would probably, if we ever did it, would say we needed to double this stuff before put in, in this model, in the budget. It's just, it's, it's the amount of services that you have to be there consistently providing the support.
So, just going back, Lauren, did you say that welfare checks count as a call for service? Is there any way to disaggregate that?
Yeah, we can. Sarah just usually-
Yeah, oh, so it, oh, so you already have a disaggregate, okay, that's good. And I was just wondering, because sometimes that can send a different perception, or communicate that there's more of an issue than there is, and acknowledge that. So if we already have a disaggregate, you're right.
Yeah, that's part of what I want in my dashboard, just community-wise, is to just identify certain types of calls for service that are more impactful to neighborhoods and communities, and take out welfare checks because-
Those are important, but they're routine, right?
Well, they are, and it's also what are you looking at? You know, so there may be times I have welfare checks in when I think about the work we're doing with the caring communities or whatever, you know? I want to know that because that's tangible to that conversation. But if you're looking at safety issues and other things, then what you're going to want to look at is, you know, DVs, assaults, those types of things. And so Zach and I have been talking about how to cut the, just police data to whole. So we can then start getting a better look at it, and then what we're doing with strategic integration, they're calling it, they did call it Herald's Map of Everything, that'll let me start coordinating different variables, so I can start trying to see consistencies throughout the community and actually turn it into more of a leading forecast versus just always, you know, reacting. Maybe we can start seeing things that'll let us be a little bit more proactive before we see a neighborhood turn or something like that. That'll all be data that they can use as well, that we'll be more focused on in the properties.
Yeah, just for your own knowledge, how they work, because we get like a very high-level report every day of the call for service that came in the day before. And Sarah follows that up with an email, depending on the property, where it's at, with details from the call logs, if there's follow-up needed, she'll copy, she copied the clinic and the property manager. At the Suites, she'll copy the clinicians. And that way, everyone is informed of like, if someone's having a crisis, we follow up. If someone experienced domestic violence, we're following up. Because we have an obligation as a landlord. And so, we track all of that, welfare checks. Sometimes it's core lead, just following up on a call, just checking in on someone that they already are working with, so it's ranges from like, no, no reaction needed to we have a problem, we need to convene.
And to give you a perspective, they're handling, you know, when we first started, that was like our daily lives, at least my life, before Lauren and Quincy. That was our daily life. They're handling probably ninety-eight percent of it now, and it's really two to five percent depending on the time.
And even the property managers are doing it.
That will elevate itself to where it takes all of us, and so it's, it's a good way to change. I mean, I can't underscore how much of a change it's been, and it's been good because my expectation then is we're all elevating into our true roles that we need to be in. There is occasion where you have a guy hit another guy over the head, where then the calls start with a gun, and then we're all kind of coming in. But that's rare.
That's rare, yeah, fine.
Yeah, versus when we first took it over, I think we were flying out of the building about two to three times a week, so.
Thank you. Now we're down to Commissioner comments. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
You can please do.
Second place, so a motion's been made by Commissioner McCoy, seconded by Commissioner Chris. To adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So that passes by.